In the diversity year on public schools, our students are always first. I wanted to share our experience and passion with the world. So, from the 2019 American Translation Association's 60th Annual Conference in Palm Springs, California, here we are.
Students first, inspire, educate, celebrate.
Hola, soy Catalina, soy mediciolada y hecho ya la sexta vez de la conferencia de A-DA. Estoy aquí para ser tu ayudante.
En la entrevista, nos vemos la California ATA 60, student de Dearborn Public Schools.
Saludos a todos los estudiantes de la ATTA 60, estudiantes de la universidad de Dearborn, España.
Hola, soy Edna, estudiante de la universidad de Dearborn Public Schools.
Mi nombre es Raymond School.
Hola, me llamo Emin, estoy aquí en la ATTA 60, en Palm Springs, California, en compañía de las escuelas de Dearborn. Los estudiantes vienen primero, inspiran, educan y celebran.
Y hoy es el día de la primera escuela de Dearborn.
Y hoy es el día de la primera escuela de Dearborn.
Y hoy es el día de la primera escuela de Dearborn.
Hola, soy Elias, estoy aquí en la sexta conferencia de la Asociación Americana de Traductores y Traducidores. Y los estudiantes vienen primero a las escuelas públicas de Dearborn.
Soy de Dukuisawa, soy de Dukio, soy de la ATTA 60, soy de la universidad de Dearborn.
Bienvenido, soy Nara, estoy aquí para escuchar la 60ª conferencia del año pasado de la ATTA. Son estudiantes siempre en primer lugar en las escuelas de Dearborn.
Buen día, estoy muy contenta de conocerte, mi nombre es Milia y estoy aquí para participar en la conferencia de la ATTA 60. Quiero decirles que los estudiantes siempre son mejores en las escuelas de Dearborn.
Bienvenidos, soy Thakku, Bulgaria, estamos aquí para la 60ª conferencia de Palm Springs, y es verdad que todos dicen que los estudiantes son los primeros en las escuelas de Dearborn.
Bienvenidos, soy Husein Berry.
Aquí.
Mary Lane.
Aquí.
Roxanne McDonald.
Aquí.
Michael Mead.
Aquí.
Adam Ozzip.
Aquí.
James Thorpe.
Aquí.
President Petchakoff.
Aquí. Siguiente, por favor.
Representando la escuela de Snow Elementary, estará el Sr. Ali Mashur, el representante de la comunidad en servicio, quien presentará a los estudiantes que nos llevarán en el juramento.
Sé que la señora Alquidra se fue, pero estaba un poco enferma, así que tuvo que ir un poco temprano.
Buenas noches, gracias por vernos aquí hoy. Tengo dos estudiantes maravillosos aquí de la escuela de Snow, ambos en el quinto grado, Islam Un y Maggie Kanslers.
Juramos a los Estados Unidos de América unido, y a cada uno de los republicanos por los que se sostienen, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Gracias. ¿Podrían venir ambos, por favor? Islam, muchas gracias. Maggie, muchas gracias. Buena charla. Siguiente, por favor.
update de la superintendencia, comencemos con los temas.
Así que comenzaremos con el agenda y voy a llamar a Zainab, quien va a leer los retiros. Tenemos en realidad solo un agenda, así que es un cambio un poco diferente de lo que está ahí. Tengo varios temas que quiero discutir, pero llamaremos a Zainab.
Buenas noches. William Kensky, 14 y medio, 14 y un cuarto de año de servicio. Debra Thompson, 24 años de servicio. James Walters, 28 y un tercio de año de servicio. Azaya Ahmed, 20 años de servicio. Janet Palmer, 31 años de servicio. Gracias.
Gracias. Y para aquellos que no saben, Janet Palmer solía ayudar sentado aquí en este escritorio, así que va a ser perdida, pero su retiro es bien merecido.
Así que felicitamos y agradecemos a todos los retiros. Les mostraremos todo lo mejor y les enviaré notas también. Está bien, eso es todo para el agenda.
No temas agenda.
Así que realmente quiero comenzar porque tenemos algunos grupos aquí hoy en positivo, pero quiero comenzar con la reconocimiento que nos gustaría dar. Esta es realmente una historia de héroes en nuestra comunidad. Y tuvimos un estudiante con un problema médico grave hace un mes y medio a dos meses. Y debido a la rápida acción del personal y los primeros respondientes, el estudiante está bien y creo que está aquí hoy. En realidad visité en el hospital, como hizo muchos otros personal cuando pasó por la situación médica. Me gustaría, y así que estoy muy orgulloso ahora mismo de llamar al Sr. Shadi Farhat y al grupo. Y va a venir y explicará la situación, pero esta es la historia de algunos de nuestros personal que subyace más allá. Hubo un defibrilador usado durante la situación, CPR, y esta es realmente una historia positiva que puede no haber sido positiva, pero gracias a todos los que se unieron. Y quiero decir que aprecio la gran liderazgo del director porque todos estábamos un poco traumatizados cuando ocurrió la situación. Y estamos muy agradecidos y agradecidos de que estéis aquí hoy. Y así que, perdón.
Bueno, muestra lo que es el esfuerzo de la comunidad, como pueden ver, por la asamblea de todos de la ciudad de Dearborn ayudando aquí.
Y vi a Mohammed cuando estaba en el hospital y su madre, y sé que fue una situación muy difícil. Así que voy a dejar al Sr. Farhat ir adelante y explicar la situación, pero nuevamente estoy muy orgulloso de todos, nuestra comunidad entera y nuestros primeros respondientes, la familia y obviamente nuestros maestros maravillosos. Y tenemos a la señora Bazey Gates aquí de los trabajadores sociales que estaban ayudando con algunos de los trauma que pasaron después de la situación.
Gracias y buenas noches, Superintendente Maleko, miembros de la junta, nuestros colegas, padres y miembros de la comunidad por estar aquí hoy. Gracias de nuevo por vernos. Como pueden saber, el 2 de octubre, Macaulay-Yunis experimentó un ataque cuando nuestro estudiante de cuarto grado, Mohammed Hanawi, sufrió un arresto cardíaco mientras nadaba y resultó un condición cardíaca no diagnosticada. Aproximadamente a las 4:45, después de nadar algunas vueltas, Mohammed no desapareció del agua. La señora Emily Bartley, que está aquí con nosotros hoy, no pasó de tiempo cuando se desplomó en el agua para sacarlo inmediatamente y comenzó CPR mientras ordenaba a los estudiantes que estaban alrededor para ir a buscar ayuda. Los estudiantes, dándose cuenta de la gravedad de la situación, se volvieron a la acción, corriendo al gimnasio donde la señora Ozinski, nuestro asistente director y yo supervisábamos un partido de voleibol. El Sr. Cartwright, que está aquí con nosotros también, fue un maestro consciente de la situación y actuó rápidamente y retiró el defibrilador externo automatizado, el AED, y lo instaló mientras la señora Bartley continuaba con CPR. Al mismo tiempo, contacté a EMS y los primeros respondientes estaban en Macaulay-Yunis en minutos. Los primeros respondientes rápidamente saltaron y continuaron con CPR. Finalmente, los primeros respondientes tendrían que usar el AED. En minutos, Mohammed fue transferido al hospital de niños donde recibió el cuidado médico que requería. La primera actualización de los médicos no fue optimista en absoluto. La situación no parecía esperada. La comunidad de Macaulay-Yunis estaba llena de tristeza, ansiedad y mucho trauma, como pueden imaginar. Los días inmediatos que seguían el incidente fueron difíciles mientras esperábamos y pidió mejor noticia. Escuelas públicas de Dearborn, trabajadores sociales, nuestro personal de apoyo, los maestros y la equipo administrativo se reunieron para asegurar que nuestro plan de trauma estaba en marcha y que los apoyos estuvieran disponibles para todos nuestros personal, estudiantes y padres en la lucha con la situación. Las semanas que siguieron incluía la comunicación diaria con la familia Hanawi y visitas diarias al hospital de niños por parte del personal de Macaulay-Yunis, padres y administradores de las escuelas públicas de Dearborn. Así que cuando los médicos del hospital de niños estaban listos para despedir a Mohammed, tuvieron una reunión con la familia Hanawi. La señora Bartley y yo estuvimos presentes cuando el doctor dijo que Emily Bartley y Brian Cartwright's rápida acción salvó la vida de Mohammed. En conclusión, me gustaría una vez más agradecer y reconocer los esfuerzos de todos los individuos que ayudaron a salvar la vida de Mohammed y aquellos que apoyaron la comunidad de Macaulay-Yunis durante este momento emocional. Sin su esfuerzo, este resultado podría haber sido trágico y la comunidad de Macaulay-Yunis no habría podido navegar exitosamente por todo esto. Así que con eso, quiero reconocer, tenemos al equipo detrás de mí, solo quiero reconocer a todos los individuos que hicieron posible esto para Mohammed de estar aquí hoy. Nuestros primeros respondientes, teníamos al Corporal Mike Maurer y el Corporal Patrick Spreser, que no podía estar aquí hoy. Querían que pudieran, pero tenían un compromiso anterior. Pero en la intención que tenemos con nosotros, tenemos al Lieutenant Scott Stockinger. All right, gracias. Tenemos al bombero tres, Mark Marros, y es su cumpleaños hoy, por cierto.
Cumpleaños.
El bombero dos, Aaron Monami. El bombero uno, Timothy Duda, y el bombero uno, Isam Ishma, graduado de Fortson. Así que gracias a todos por sus acciones en ese día. Como mencioné antes en mi discurso, tomó a todos, tomó el apoyo administrativo en el nivel del edificio y en el distrito. Así que quiero reconocer al Dr. Rola Gates también y su equipo. Estaban en el edificio inmediatamente para proporcionar todo el apoyo necesario en la lucha con tal situación. Teníamos a nuestro trabajador social de Macaulay-Yunis, Latifa Sabah, los dos asistentes directores, Crystal Ozinski y María Kobesi, director ejecutivo Shannon Peterson, que me ayudó a través de esto, y por supuesto Glenn por estar allí para apoyarme a través de esto también, y la junta también, específicamente el Sr. Berry y el Sr. Ozzip por su apoyo a través de esto. Así que todos ustedes, de nuevo, gracias por hacer posible esto. Y último, pero no menos, no podemos olvidar a los dos que hicieron posible esto. Si no por su acción inmediata, Mohammed no estaría aquí hoy. La señora Emily Bartley y el Sr. Brian Cartwright. Así que gracias a todos. Gracias por vernos hoy. Gracias.
Así que en el agenda de esta noche, creo que la junta está mirando la resolución siguiente. Mientras, el día de 2 de octubre de 2019, hubo una emergencia médica amenazante en la escuela de Macaulay-Yunis de Dearborn, Michigan. Mientras, un estudiante con una condición amenazante necesitaba un auxilio de primera instancia hasta el llegado de los primeros respondientes. Mientras, los maestros de las escuelas públicas de Dearborn, Brian Cartwright y Emily Bartley, tomaron una acción rápida, llamando a su entrenamiento y habilidades para proporcionar tratamiento de primera ayuda salvaje al estudiante. Mientras, el Sr. Cartwright y la señora Bartley comenzaron CPR y usaron un defibrilador automático electrónico para estabilizar al estudiante, permitiendo a los primeros respondientes continuar con la asistencia médica y transportar al estudiante a un hospital. Y mientras, el resultado de el Sr. Cartwright's y la señora Bartley's acciones salvó la vida del estudiante. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelva que el Board de Educación de Dearborn extendió sus más sinceras gracias y gratitud al Sr. Cartwright y la señora Bartley por sus acciones heroicas en ese día. Se resuelve que el Board de Educación de Dearborn reconoce la importancia de los defibriladores automáticos electrónicos como dispositivos críticos de salvaje vida en todas las edificios públicos de las escuelas de Dearborn. Se resuelve que el Board de Educación de Dearborn desde este día adelante reconoce el 2 de octubre como Día de Avertimiento de Defibriladores Automáticos en las escuelas públicas de Dearborn. Y se resuelve que el Board de Educación de Dearborn exige a todos los edificios del distrito que use el 2 de octubre como día para asegurar que todos los dispositivos AED están en orden de funcionamiento adecuado y inspeque todos los otros suministros de ayuda de primera ayuda.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Ahora tengo que hacer una pregunta mientras estemos aquí. ¿No es el Sr. Duda un graduado de Edsel Ford?
Es cierto.
Okay.
Es uno de los.
Oh, hay un par. Bueno, genial.
Creo que necesito a Mohammed, el de todo.
Bueno.
Lo tenía en cuenta.
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 Bueno.
Así que en el agenda de esta noche, creo que la junta está mirando la resolución siguiente. Mientras, el día de 2 de octubre de 2019, hubo una emergencia médica amenazante en la escuela de Macaulay-Yunis de Dearborn, Michigan. Mientras, un estudiante con una condición amenazante necesitaba un auxilio de primera instancia hasta el llegado de los primeros respondientes. Mientras, los maestros de las escuelas públicas de Dearborn, Brian Cartwright y Emily Bartley, tomaron una acción rápida, llamando a su entrenamiento y habilidades para proporcionar tratamiento de primera ayuda salvaje a la estudiante. Mientras, el Sr. Cartwright y la señora Bartley comenzaron CPR y usaron un defibrilador
Now, I do have to pull one. Oh, wait, we have some other awards first.
Right.
May I ask a question while we're sitting here? Is it Mr. Duda a graduate of Edsel Ford?
That is true.
Okay.
There's one of those.
Oh, there's a couple of them, huh? Good, great.
Yeah, I think I need Mohammed getting the hold. A new and improved version. First time we brought it out.
I don't know, you're thirty times.
Really, no, no, no.
Whatever you want, whatever you want.
Oh.
A little bit of background.
President P., President A. I do want to say something about that.
Okay, trustee Lane?
Okay, so I would just like to say this is tremendous. Everybody is very moved, but we have to remember the defibrillator didn't get there by accident. The defibrillators were put in the schools about twenty years ago, and I'd like to say that that is thanks to Ernie Oz, who continues to be active in our community. He's a former Dearborn Schools parent. I asked him a little bit, because I remember some of it, but I did ask him for some history, and he told me that we were the first in the state to do that, as far as he knows. The Dearborn Public Schools managed to raise thirty-four thousand dollars at the time. It was a challenge that Ernie put out there, having heard of another student who died because there wasn't a defibrillator in her school in Bloomfield. So, among the legal community, her parents and other people, like attorney Lori Khan, mentioned it to other people. Some people here who tried to push it were Jamal Berry and Jana Artis, and the DFT kindly made a contribution.
Well, I was on PTA council at the time.
President Kevin Harris saw to that. So, it saved this young person's life. It also probably extended the life of another person who was driving by Edsel Ford. So, I want to say to anyone who says, "Let's cut the fat out of schools." We all want to cut out waste in government, but this is an example of something where we spent money on the assumption that someday it might be used. And was it worth thirty-four thousand dollars? Was it worth thirty-four thousand dollars? Yes, it was worth thirty-four thousand dollars. So, thanks to those people that had the foresight to do that.
Real quick.
Yes, trustee.
I'd just like to make a suggestion. Perhaps we can have a copy of that resolution hanging up at McCullough- McCalla-Unis on the wall near the defibrillator. I don't know where the defibrillator is in that school, but if it's in an open area, I think it would be good to have that acknowledgement there.
Sure, that's a great idea. Thank you. All right. All right, so I'm going to keep moving along, because I have a few things. I want to thank, first of all, the board for their support. When I was at my trip last month, that was my first board meeting. I think I've missed, even going back into my HR time, many, many years, my first time as a superintendent. It was pre-arranged because of the National Superintendent Association Award, and it was one of the last things that I went to. It was a great experience, meeting with all the other superintendents from across the nation and having that network ability and to continue to dialogue with them. And I want to thank the board, and I want to thank Executive Cabinet, Mason, who was exacting superintendent, Dr. Chokel. And by the way, it's the second time, Mason, I've been out of town when there's been a snow day call. So, although I did get a call, we did talk at four AM from the hotel, but the executive team did a great job, and Dr. Chokel, thank you for, you know, sitting in the chair over here. So, appreciate the board supporting her. I also want to, I won't reiterate any of the comments that were made by her on my behalf, but I do want to say, oh, and the other thing, I was in Washington, which is coming up later.
Right.
Is the Lindbergh, that was actually more, the more important reason. It just turned out that it was scheduled the same week. And so, we were there, and we're going to have them a little later, but we had a great experience with the Lindbergh Blue Ribbon School. So, that's the other reason, that was very important. And actually, that was the highlight of the week on the Friday when we received the award. So, now, just to mention, it was mentioned by Dr. Chokel about the bond, and I'm not going to rehash that. All I want to say is that I know there's been some discussion with the board at the study session, and so, we are going to move forward. We're going to move forward and come up with another plan. We're not going to look back. We're going to take all the information and learning. And so, we're going to, we have some at the direction of the board. I watched the board meetings. We are going to have, we have some meetings set up. You had directed David to set up with a couple of consultants. And then, we do have a small group meeting set up with some of the individuals that opposed. And so, I think what we'll start doing is trying to dialogue and come up with a game plan, because the reality is we still have buildings that need, they need tender care. And I see a hand going up there.
I don't want to stop you, Dr. Michael.
No, that's okay.
Oh, you're done.
I just want to endorse that I would appreciate if the Student Advisory Committee joins that, whatever committee is formed. And then, we also received from Mr. Oz a bunch of suggestions as well. So, I trust that President Petlicoff forwarded that on.
Oh, yeah, I sent it to everybody.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because, and Zainab can attest to this, the last meeting we had at Fortson, I was with my counsel. I was, I didn't come in to talk heavily, but actually, how distraught the students were. They were really upset about the fact that it didn't pass, because they realized now, and it wasn't about them, because they realized a lot of the work was going to happen. Some of them are seniors, so they would have been gone. But now, they were thinking, "Well, look, we're not going to get some of the upgrades that we know we need." And again, I didn't initiate that. That was something that they, it hurt, it hurt a lot of us because of the students, and I think they were firsthand and were able to tell me exactly that. So, I appreciate that suggestion. So, anyway, we'll move forward, and we listen to the community, and I saw what the board said. And so, I just want anyone to know, I'm always an optimist. Class half full, let's figure it out. Let's move forward. We'll come up with a plan, and we'll do what's right for our students. And I appreciate the great support of the board and the leadership, and for the board for holding us accountable and asking the tough questions. I also want, right now, I'm going to keep moving along to keep the meeting going. I'm going to call up John Leacher. He is the new Safety and Security Supervisor. I'll call him up to the podium. He was approved at the last meeting, but due to the snow, we had a lot of different things going on that day, and he wasn't able to be there.
And you're going to have to swing the mic back towards you.
Got it, thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to assume the position of the Health, Safety and Security Supervisor. I'm about a weekend right now and getting my feet wet. There's a lot to do, and I'm looking forward to it. Work with a great group of people here. You should be very proud of your staff also. So you're aware, I'm a product of Dearborn Schools myself. Graduated from Dearborn High School. I'm just going to say a long time ago for sake of discussion. But thank you for the opportunity. I'm very excited to be here.
We're excited to have you, thank you.
And we're excited to have him. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we are fortunate to get someone with the experience level. You have law enforcement and police chief. So, we look forward to having you continue to helping us so that we keep our schools safe for our students.
Absolutely, looking forward to it. I've already marked October 2nd on my calendar, so I won't forget about the A.D.s. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving right along, I know there was some public comment last week from some representatives from Hague PTA. I want to let everyone know that we've had a very positive meeting with the Hague PTA. And I also want to clarify that at the, I was always aware of the fact that there were over-capacity issues at Hague. It goes back to my first year of superintendent, because the board might recall, I actually directed some boundary changes. Secondly, we were recommending that addition. So, there may have been some kind of misunderstanding, but having said that, I want to move forward on that. We had a very positive meeting. We had some positive dialogue and some positive posts. So, we're coming up with some solutions in the interim, and Mr. Short has done a great job, and Ms. Farage and our executive team, and Dr. Chokel. So, we're going to come up with some solutions, and at least in the short term, and we're going to make it work for our students over there.
And we all appreciate that.
Okay. All right, I also want to mention this, and something's probably going to come on the screen about the, it's the holiday season, and we have the Goodfellas Drive on Friday. And you saw them out on the streets, that included some of us. Traditionally, Dearborn Schools has taken the corner at Outer Drive and Cherry Hill. And I've been doing it for several years, going back to Brian Whiston's time. I think it's been going on for even many years beyond that. You see that handsome fellow right there?
Yeah, I donated to him.
Yeah, and he didn't know I was putting this on, by the way. I went to Eric and just said, "Don't tell." So, so you can't let anyone know. There was one year I was actually a Santa, but this year I just wasn't able. It was actually, I got to say, it was cold because of the wind. It was the wind chill. And so, I was able to kind of use a tree to hide behind the wind every now and then, then pop out and get, but we appreciate the, and we were interviewed by Councilwoman Herrick as well. And they were all over the city. So, the individuals from our staff, Troy Patterson, Jill Chokel, David Muston, and Mark Andrews, Pam Miller. But I know there were people all over the city, and we've had other people contribute as well. So, it's just a great thing. It's just really the power of the Dearborn community with all the organizations that come together for those in need. And we have, in our district, Ms. Danine Charles and Dr. Rolle Bazie-Gates, who are here. And they actually coordinate when there's families and others in need. You have donations from groups like Kiwanis Rotary Exchange Club, obviously, the Goodfellas, and many others, just very generous. The Police Department, and it goes on and on. I couldn't say them all. And people just come together at this time of need in Dearborn. And I've seen it over my, now over twenty-four years in Dearborn Schools. And so, that's why it's just a great place to be with giving people. I also want to mention this. I know there was, it's come up before, and we were waiting until after the bond, and I think trustee Barry, you had requested this several board meetings prior. I think it was maybe in May, May even. But we said we'd hold off on this until we kind of got through the bond. We had a lot going on. And some of us attended the National School Board Conference, and we got into, you know, the school start times for all schools. And so, we are going to look at having, we had some cabinet discussions, but what we're going to start doing is I'm going to try to form an exploratory committee just from the cabinet initially to look at the issue. And we did have this come up, as someone might remember, many years ago, where we looked at it. There's a lot of new research that has come out since then, and there may be different feelings and other suggestions. So, you know, not to get into a big discussion now, but just to get back to the board. And I know there were some, I think there was some dialogue with trustee Thorpe and trustee Barry, and you guys were also at the conference that you attended as well, trustee Thorpe. And you've talked to me about this. So, I think we, you know, there's a lot of complicated issues around it, but if it's right for students, I think we need to find a way. And so, I just want to let the board know that we're going to try to start forming a, just at least from the cabinet, to start looking first, and then see where we go from there.
Novai has just begun.
When you say we'll start looking at the cabinet level, are we looking to make a decision at the cabinet level or recommendation?
No, I think that.
Because what I'm looking for, I know, we've looked this, we've looked at this a few times before. It's always been a recommendation from administration. What I'm looking for here is information, data, research. Bring it to the, bring it to the board, and we'll go from there. We'll make a decision together.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Recommendations before it came, and, you know, it gets stalled out before it even gets to the board.
Yeah, that's why I would call it more of an exploratory committee, just to look at the issues, maybe look at some of the positives and the, I guess would be some of the roadblocks, some of the things that would be beneficial. Definitely not to make a decision, because I think in the past, too, we've also, we've had surveys. If I, we're going to go into the history, too. And today, at Executive Cabinet, we discussed getting some of the archives. And David actually found some of the old reports that were done at, that were presented to the board, going back when Brian was here.
Yeah, I was on the board.
And you were here. And so, we're going to try to get some of those historical documents to give us some of that. So, that, it's exactly what you just said, is to gather information. I don't anticipate, because obviously, this would be a major community decision, and the board trustees are representative of the community. So, it ultimately would be, you know, your decision. But I just wanted to put it on the radar that there's other districts that are discussing it. I'll just say, in general, I'm over, I'm generally favorable to really looking at it and trying to make it work for our students and maybe a change. But having said that, it's not going to be based on me. It's going to be based on how we can look at the data and look through all the logistical issues.
Trustee Thorpe.
I'm glad to hear that we're talking about it. And the one thing that I would ask you then to consider, since the topic's already been brought up, is go back to the Student Advisory Council and ask those students, what do they think could be some of the pros and the cons of any potential change?
Thank you.
Yeah, and Novai has, it was just announced on the news today that they are going to be instituting a time change. So, they'll be the guinea pigs first in this state, I have a feeling.
And I think they were exploring it, though. I don't know that they were yet. I'm not positive, but were they decided on that time?
I don't know, but Berkeley changed the other times about a year ago.
Okay. I actually know the superintendent there very well. We, both of us, he's the president of the MASA State Superintendent Association. So, I am now in contact with him weekly and/or if not, every other week, a couple of weeks, at least once a month I'll see him.
I believe the board is going to vote on it.
Oh, are they?
In a, next week.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right. And the last thing I have, so thank you, thank you, trustee Barry, President Petlicoff, and trustee Thorpe for your comments, and trustee Lane and everyone, trustee McDonald. Last thing, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. The time over the holiday, this time of year, when we, school closes on the twentieth for students, the end of the day. And it is the only time of year where the district really shuts down for an extended period. And so, I just want to, you know, wish the happy holiday season to all the board trustees, to all the community members out here. You know, we're going to be seeing, we just saw a great presentation of people that come together to help a student. Now, we're going to see later on about Lindbergh School, one of thirteen schools in the state that receives the award of thirty-five hundred schools. We have a lot of positive going on. We also have a lot of room for improvement. But having said that, we're a great school community because of the fact of how we come together as a community. And so, when we get a chance to kind of unwind a little, enjoy the family, and understand why we're really here, I think it's really important. And I've been saying that to my cabinet administration and to all the principals when we met last week. It's just really important that, you know, you do take some time. So, I wish everyone all the best for a wonderful holiday season with their family and friends, and Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and any other holidays that you may be, you know, celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. First is a musical performance from the Fortson Chamber Choir.
Good evening, my name is Matt Laura, and I'm the choir director at Fortson High School. This is one of our seven choirs, Chamber Choir. This is about half of Chamber Choir. The rest is taking exams and studying. So, we're here to perform a piece for you this evening.
Well, we appreciate you giving up your time.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Laura. Appreciate the great work that you do, and your students are just fantastic. And I made sure that we got that, the picture with the sign out in the hallway before. So, we really appreciate that. And I think when I saw your group at one of the events, the Performing Arts, they're like, "Where's the sign?" Well, we got that new version, right? So, we didn't let you down. So, great job, really appreciate it. Happy holidays.
Next item, please.
Commendations.
Hello, I'm, good evening. I'm Abraham Castle.
And I'm Nidin Mahmood, president of the senior class of 2020. And we're here proudly to represent Fortson High School.
We'd like to thank the board, the superintendent, the directors, and of course, the community members for being here tonight. We will start with district commendations. Commendations to the winners of Blue Hands United 2019 SUSU Project. Nolan Elementary staff Sarah Feldkamp and Noel Mubara's won a $500 scholarship sponsorship to buy items to help serve special needs students at the school. Suzanne Ledich, Dearborn High, will receive a $250 check. The SUSU Project helps special education teachers buy needed items to assist their students. Commendations to Dr. Joseph Tynan, who was praised in a letter from his parent, from a parent, for his transformative leadership at Nolan Elementary School. The parent went on to applaud Dr. Tynan for being available, friendly, and personable. Commendations to Nada Alamedeen for earning Human Resource Specialist Certification under the Michigan School Business Officials voluntary certification program. This award reflects the high degree of academic and professional preparation established by the MSBO.
And here are the high school commendations. Commendations to Dr. Nabeel Hamamet from Fortson High School, who recently received the American Council on the Teaching of Farian Language Arabic Veteran Teacher Award. The award recognizes Arabic teachers who play a key role in promoting the Arabic language and culture, and those who set a standard of excellence for all teachers. Commendations to coaches Osama Abdul Hassan and Saleh Abazid, whose varsity basketball teams were presented with a top 100 sportsmanship award from the Michigan High School Athletic Association for 2019. This award is presented through positive reports filed by referees and opposing athletic directors. We have received this award for the last three years. Thanks to them for enabling our program to achieve this prestigious honor. Commendations to Dearborn High School's marching band. The band performed in the MSBOA Marching Festival in October and received the highest possible rating, a first division. Commendations to the Dearborn High Boys Varsity Soccer Team, which won its second consecutive MHSAA district championship with a five-to-one win over Woodhaven. The team is coached by Aaron File. Commendations to Cheryl Johnson, a custodian and groundskeeper at Fortson High School, for her outstanding work maintaining the grounds at the building. And commendations to students with Fortson's Interact Club, which earlier this fall helped the Dearborn Rotary with the cleanup along Telegraph Road. Students who volunteered at the cleanup included Yasmin Fawaz, Latul Aljabori, Mohamed Abbas, Hamza Hamawi, Rida Mazeh, and Mohamed Rida.
And finally, here are the elementary commendations. Commendations to River Oaks 5th grade students and teachers, Mrs. Walski, Mrs. Quartana, and Mrs. Shamsadeen. After researching the UNICEF, researching the UNICEF organization, students decided to trick or treat to support UNICEF. They collected change from friends and family and over a week raised $111.50. The money will be used to provide children in need with water, food, and fleece blankets. Commendation to the Oakman Lions Robotics Team for their recent efforts at the first robotics competition held in Milan, Michigan. The team won first place in the presentation of a problem and solution category. And finally, commendations to the students and staff at Maples Elementary for their efforts to collect more than $4,300 during a recent pennies-for-patience fundraising event. The funds will be donated to the Leukemia Foundation.
Thank you for being with your, thank you for being with us here today. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Great job, great job, great job.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
So, I believe we have Zainab coming back up to help us out.
Zainab, put the, put the microphone, she's going to have to stand on your tippy toes.
A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for college concepts. A donation of $1,200 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a better library project. A donation of $525 has been offered to Duval Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Visual Learning Enhancement Project Center. A donation of $1,857.75 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for art materials for the citywide art show. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Oakman Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for AV and projection. A donation of $750 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Loud and Clear in kindergarten. A donation of $217 has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Dearborn Academic Games League Awards. A donation of $400 has been offered to Fortson High School by Michigan Nature Association to be used for field trip expenses. A grant of $4,000 has been offered to McCullough Elementary and Duval Elementary Schools by Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs to be used to pay for the musical presentation of the Bremen Town Musicians to the students at both schools. Thank you.
Thank you.